Thank you Kathy. Greetings board, I'm very pleased to call to order this special meeting of the South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees. It is August 31st at 7:02 PM, we're a couple minutes back. For technical reasons, we'll start with roll call. Will you manage that for us?
I can do that. FJ Pratt.
Here.
Kenny Gross.
Here.
Dean Sirwin.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Outstanding, thank you. And our council liaison Diana Mahmood is here with us. So we do have an opportunity here for public comment whether on this agenda item or anything else. I believe that we have a member of the public, I would just like to remind that public comment is limited to up to three minutes per item. And we would like to adhere to that. So with that, do we have any public comment?
There's someone on the Zoom named Josh.
Hi Josh.
Josh, if you have a comment, now is your opportunity.
I do not have a comment, I'm just here because this is awesome. Carry on.
Very good.
I'm really glad you're here to be here for that Josh, because I think we all think it's pretty awesome as well. Is there someone else who looks like?
Yes, somebody else is joining, let's see if that person has a public comment. I see Steve on the Zoom, Steve, we're just about to do a general public comment, do you have a public comment? I'm gonna take that as a no, so I think you can close public comment.
With that, unless we have anyone else, I don't, doesn't appear so, we'll close comment, we'll move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the only other item on the agenda, our action discretion. We have a bequest to South Pasadena Library for capital improvements to the children's wing. We, should I read the entirety of the matter behind us?
Yeah, you can read the recommendations.
Item two, for today's date, the recommendation, it is recommended that the Library Board of Trustees adopt the resolution two. One, accept a conditional bequest to the South Pasadena Library for specified capital improvement to the children's wing and two, request that the city council direct staff to establish a fund to receive the monies from the bequest to ensure the preservation of the funds for the intended purpose of making specified capital improvements to the children's wing. Would anyone like me to read the background on this?
I mean, we could do that for the benefit of the public, I mean, they have access to the document.
Yes, so the background, Albert Bert Edward Parley, a longtime resident of South Pasadena, who passed away on January 9th of this year 2022, made four conditional bequests in his will to the South Pasadena Library, which was executed in 1990. This will has been admitted to probate in Los Angeles County Superior Court. These bequests are, one, the sum of $100,000 in cash. Two, promissory note and deed of trust on unimproved land in Craig County, Oklahoma, which I believe we've already been told, has been paid off, so while in 1990, there might have been value to it, at the moment it's extinguished and they have no value. Three, the single family dwelling at 704 Mound Avenue in South Pasadena and four, the single family dwelling at 712 Mound Avenue in South Pasadena. Mr. Carlisle's bequest to the library is conditioned on the library board using such for, and this is in quotes, this is directly from the will, "A capital improvement to the children's wing of the library building in the form of an amphitheater to be known as the quote-unquote story room." The will further requires that an appropriate plaque is to be placed in the library acknowledging this gift, which shall indicate only that it is quote-unquote from Geneva. As an aside, we finally discovered that Geneva was his girlfriend, at least in the 70s or 80s. The monies from the bequest may only be used for the specific capital improvement described in the conditions, but what I read before is defined as the conditions. The monies may not be used for personal costs, personnel costs, speaking, operating costs, or be transferred to the city general fund. If the library board or city determines that it cannot use the bequest or cannot adhere to the conditions, which again is that it's the story room and has a plaque, then pursuant to terms of the will, the bequest will be given in the Los Angeles chapter of the American Loan Association. There was some analysis done by the city attorney, which I'll read for the record. Mr. Carlisle's will is a lawful disposition of property under Probate Code Section 6102 Subsection D, which authorizes gifts to cities. The Board of Trustees of municipal libraries may accept a bequest made to, which is under Educational Section Code 18920. Monies acquired by requests to a library must be apportioned to a fund within the library fund in a manner consistent with the terms of the bequest, Educational Code Section 18951. Bequests with specified conditions shall be kept in a fund to ensure the preservation of the funds for the intended purpose, Education Code Section 18952. The legislative body of a city, the city council, must accept or reject a bequest made to a city, Government Code Section 37354. Because the bequest is made to the library for capital improvements to city property, both bodies must approve the bequest. In this instance, both bodies, the Library Board of Trustees and the City Council. The monies will be kept in a fund established for the construction of a children's wing amphitheater slash story room, consistent with the conditions. A CIP project will be established prior to engaging in further activity related to use of such monies. The evaluation of design and planning of such facility will be undertaken by the Library Board at a future date. The fiscal impact of this, the actual value of the question is unknown at this time, after the properties are sold through the probate process. The probate court will finalize the sale and monies will be remitted to the library for use consistent with the bequest. We've discussed casually that we don't really know what those properties are worth. South Pasadena is a kind of sawy after area, although I'm told that property values are starting to plateau a little bit because of mortgage rates. Alternatives, alternatives consider, we could reject the bequest. We could also request the property to be accepted in fee and sale be conducted outside of the probate process. Personally, I'm not exactly interested in becoming a landlord and dealing with all of that, probably would be easier to do it through the probate process. We have an attachment, which is a resolution of the Board of Trustees, which I already read, but I'll read it in full, actually there's a more formal version of it, Resolution Number 2022-001. The resolution of the Library Board of Trustees of the City of South Pasadena, California, accepting the bequest to the South Pasadena Library from Bert Edward Parley. Whereas, California Education Code Section 18920 allows the Board of Library Trustees to receive a bequest for the benefit of the library and, whereas, California Education Code Section 18951 requires that monies acquired by bequest be apportioned to a fund to be designated the library fund and California Education Code Section 18952 requires that the board shall provide for the safety and preservation of the fund, terms and conditions enumerated in such respect. And, whereas longtime South Pasadena resident Bert Edward Carlisle made conditional bequests to the South Pasadena Library and is well presently being processed through the probate proceeding in the Los Angeles County Superior Court, LA SC Case Number 22STPB01025. And, whereas, the bequest includes $100,000, a promissory note and deed of trust for certain land in Craig County, Oklahoma, and real property at 704 Mound Avenue and 712 Mound Avenue, South Pasadena, collectively to the bequest. And specifies that the proceeds of such requests may only be used for the express purpose of a capital improvement, this is in quotation, a capital improvement to the children's wing of the library building in the form of an amphitheater to be known as the story room and, end quote, and that quote, "An appropriate plaque is to be placed in the library acknowledging this gift, which shall only indicate that it is quote-unquote from Geneva," end quote, collectively the conditions. And, whereas, the residents of South Pasadena would benefit greatly from such a capital improvement to the library building. And, whereas, the Library Board of Trustees wish to accept the bequest and the conditions associated with it, with it. And, whereas, Mr. Carlisle's will is a lawful disposition of property under Probate Code Section 6102-02, which authorizes gifts to cities, now therefore, the Library Board of Trustees of the City of South Pasadena, California does resolve, declare, determine an order as follows. And we have not yet voted on this, we will be making a motion for this in a moment. Section one, that the bequest is accepted to the, by the Library Board of Trustees pursuant to California Education Code Section 18920. And section two, that the Library Board of Trustees requests that the city council direct staff to establish a fund to receive the monies from the bequest to ensure the preservation of the funds for the intended purpose of making certain capital improvements to the children's wing. Section three, that the funds be used only for the terms and conditions enumerated in such bequest and that when the time comes to construct an addition to the children's wing, that the funds to be, excuse me, that the funds be utilized consistent with the conditions. So that is the motion in front of us, the resolution in front of us, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, of course I'm all for this, but, I mean, the issue arises that constructing something like that, of course, that will increase our maintenance required in the library and specifically on that building, the terms of the bequest specifically state for the capital improvement, not maintenance of the capital improvement. And in the resolution, it doesn't make any provision for maintenance, so just as long as we're aware, it's gonna cost us money to maintain it that we do not have, are we allowed to set aside money for maintenance?
That's a question that we would need to ask the city attorney, it's my general understanding from conversations that are at that with estate lawyers, that it is possible that maintenance could be provided for from that bequest because it would be part, potentially part of the condition.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
To maintain that property. But, that's something that we'll decide when we get to what it's gonna cost, I think. But we could, I prefer not to table this notion until we get an opinion of council, but we can certainly ask city attorney to provide us with an opinion as to whether or not things such as additional staffing costs, additional, I think the cost for oh, the board is escaping me, but furniture and others such, and lighting and those types of things would be part of that capital improvement. But in terms of establishing a fund, a reasonable fund for a reasonable period of time for maintenance of that area, I think would be something that we should and could ask city attorney to provide us with an opinion on.
Using some of those funds for the additional utilities, it could be, I don't know what we, but it could be significant in the questioning very specific for is that it's not included.
I don't know that it's saying that it's not included, I think it's gonna be a question of case law, as to what, what kind of reasonable costs that are created by the actual capital improvement could or could not be included. I would hope that the additional maintenance on that room and the additional utilities over and above what we already do to maintain the building would be relatively diminished.
And then, yeah, and then I had a, you know, in it, it says that it's the form of an amphitheater to be known as the story room. So it doesn't really say that it has to be sized down to children. So could it, I mean, what you might wanna think about is maybe a universal amphitheater, so it could be multi-use? Because it doesn't specifically say it has to be children-sized.
It only states that it has to be in the so-called children's wing.
Oh yeah.
And there is, there is a room that is the children's room. And I think that what we've been discussing generally is that because of the limited space in that, as some refer to a closet, it's not a very large room, it really isn't, that we would probably, probably be looking at an additional an addition to that structure, blowing out a wall and building an additional room. I don't think we wanna build an outdoor amphitheater, it does say story room, so I think that is an implicit suggestion that this be actually either inside the existing building or a new addition to the building added on, so I think would be the best bet here. But these are the decisions that can be made by the Library Board of Trustees in the future as we work to secure design and all of that. But these are all great questions, great thoughts, great ideas. I do wanna come back to though, do we have any issue of actually accepting this bequest? Is anyone concerned about our ability to abide by those conditions?
Well, I think that, I think whoever appraising the property, I think I'd like to get a real clear appraisal because I did go buy those properties and it butts up next to property that is to be developed. So I think it might have maybe risen in price then, and also I think property in South Pasadena, I just, you know, I'd like to get the
The best deal we can.
The best deal that we can, and, and again, it butts up next to some other developments, so it would be, you know, it might behoove us to, you know, find out maybe what's going on there, but I, yeah.
We can, we can and should do that, I think that the issue is that the property will be sold and the proceeds will come to us, the probate attorney has a vested interest in the maximization of the value of the estate because they're paid a fee that is based on a contingency, which is a percentage of the value of the estate. So the more those properties are worth, the higher their fee is, so I think that they will be very interested, as well as the administrator of their estate, their fees are also determined by the value.
And I just wanna make sure that that probate lawyer knows, I'm sure they do know about the where the properties are situated.
I would have to presume that using the competitive sales. Again, we could ask the city attorney if we have any ability to be involved in the determination of what bid is accepted by the probate. But I think to be the party that determines what happens there, we would have to take the property out of probate and then sell it ourselves, which would mean we would have to become landlords, you know, and to gain that.
You know, and there's no, I mean, there's no timeline on this, so is that something that we need to be aware of?
Well, there is a secondary oh gosh, the word is escaping me.
Benefits here.
Yes, thank you. Secondary beneficiary, she was waiting in the wings, so if we cannot use it.
Oh yeah, a long.
But, yeah.
Well, no.
There's, there's a, so I think that, I think we're expected to do this within a reasonable period of time.
So what I'm saying, like, they're gonna sell the properties tomorrow, I mean, you know, that can give us enough, or whoever, the probate people, are they gonna make sure we maximize the value of it, so is it, is it a, like, they don't get this done?
They need to close probate within a reasonable period of time, so they probably, probably I'm guessing that at this point where we are, Diana, do you have any experience with probate? I'm currently the administrator of an estate and I know that the fairs are yelling and screaming at me daily to get this thing closed.
No, I, I have minimal exposure to probate, but there is an added wrinkle and that is that one of the properties has a tenant. And so, for that reason, there's some added complexity and it's the city's interest. I believe the city is best served by having the sales conducted by the probate court as the estate attorney has suggested, and it's my personal belief, I don't know this for a fact, but I would assume that the estate attorney, that there are fiduciary duties owed to the beneficiaries to maximize value. So if we thought anything looked awry, we could certainly bring that up. Also, in response to the point raised by Bianca, I think it's a mixed issue as to the proximity of the development. Depending, I believe one property, and I forget which is which, one property is definitely listed on our inventory of historic cultural resources and I believe another is identified as a contributor, so I would not assume that the properties could be demolished and if in fact they cannot be, it may be, it may diminish rather than enhance the value to be next to a large development.
Well.
So, again, I do think that generally, South Pasadena is considered a very desirous place to live. Our property values, as those of us who have been on the various revenue measures in the past, our property values are significantly higher than surrounding communities, middle or school. And, so I think that there will be competitive pricing. I don't think that the probate court is willing to dump this, these properties. I don't know whether or not there's a fiduciary obligation to get the maximum value for them, but I think it would be very hard to not get the maximum value just by putting anything on, on the market here. If we look in the paper every day and see the ads from the various real estate agents who talk about, you know, I saw one just yesterday, 12 offers, or, you know, I think it was 16 offers in 12 days, and it went for something like a third over asking. So, but that was 1.6 million dollars, so the total price. So I think that the prices that we've seen, which I think valued it at somewhere between 2.5 and 3. something, is probably reasonable given the, the various issues that have been raised. I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's a useful use of our time at this moment to debate what the price might be, I think that our question, the question before us is, do we want to accept this request or do we want to get a no on this?
I just have one more question about the fund, when we, if we do receive this and it goes into a fund, is it, can we put it into an interest-bearing account?
I think we'd have to talk to the city about that, I don't think that they would probably not specifically invest those particular funds. They have an investment strategy for the city's, you know, the funds that they hold, but that's all something that we can talk about.
Where does, where does that money, because I, you know, I'm a, you know, I like, so where would that, where does that money go? Or is it, you know, I'm a real tangible person, does it go into a bank account?
I believe they create, what they're proposing is create a fund, whether that fund is a designation of funds within an existing account or a separate account, I presume that it's gonna go into some type of cash sweep account that won't be maybe specifically invested, but would be at least in an interest-bearing savings account or some type of money market.
Or anything you do that's got interest-bearing, which is just put it in the box.
Yeah, so, you know, interest rates are, as we all know, going up, but they're still relatively insignificant, but $3 million earning interest at even 1% is going to be thrown off.
And, all of the city's accounts are in interest-bearing accounts to the extent that they're, that the type of investment is not a bond, it's a matter of the relative return and that depends upon the need for liquidity. So, the separate fund is really an accounting function as opposed to necessarily a separate investment vehicle. But I would assume that our, hopefully soon-to-be-hired finance director would determine what the cash flow needs are and make an appropriate investment of the funds.
That, that makes a lot of sense, and they might be backlit, they might say, we need to have some liquidity for planning and hiring of a few, well, for plans and an RFP and, you know, those, all those things cost money and this is a city project, so we get to abide by certain different rules than if we're building a shed in the backyard. So there may be, they might take some of the money and say, this will go into a longer-term, three- to five-year investment that might give us higher rate of return and this will be in just a cash account that's getting basically 1% or whatever the interest rate is. But again, I don't, I don't know that we, well, I don't know, I think we could ask the city attorney if we have as the Library Board of Trustees, because as we've discussed, you two were newer to the board, but we did discuss this last year when we went over some of the the rules and we are the body, which is why we're having this conversation, when there is a gift to the library, it does come to the Library Board of Trustees. So with that power, I believe that we do have the ability to at least ask the city and give direction as to what we would or wouldn't like to see done.
And I think this is something that has not happened before at this price point, you know, we have the Mullen funds and the Row Mine funds and those, you know, they're just part of the city's holdings, we don't, you know, get money, we don't get the interest to spend, the money is just, the interest is just going into the city's coffers, but this is different and.
The interest is just increase the available funds, which adds to our other point that, you know, that will make more funds available for utilities, maintenance.
I think we would wanna talk to finance about that and try to establish some.
So we're gonna get, we're gonna get to have many more discussions and many more motions, if we do vote to accept this request. Do we have any more discussion or question?
How about that one? Public comment.
Okay, please.
Yes, Doug Shelby, speaking to the library, I believe that a storytime capital improvement or facility is not on anyone's list of improvement desperately needed by this library. So I certainly hope that if possibly an outdoor amphitheater it can be constructed, which is kind of dovetail with what you're already doing outside, that it can be suitable for all ages.
That's great, and I appreciate that, again, we do have to abide by the conditions or the longer citation can say we didn't and demand those thoughts. So we do have to, we would need to get opinion of council as to what the, you know.
But I'm gonna need a comment on public comment, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it is, it is a good point, and I think that it goes into what is the, you know, as the joke is, depends on what your definition is, it is. So if each of the words in this will be something that I think we do, this goes into our prior conversation. We will want to get the opinion of the city attorney and have them get the opinion of the state council and and others to determine what kind of flexibility we have and still abiding by the condition. So, again, I will ask one more time, I don't wanna rush anyone, but I'm gonna make the decision. Does anyone have any more questions, comments?
We have our public comments though.
Oh.
No.
No.
We lost Steve, whether that was. In that case, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-001 regarding the accepting of the bequest to the South Pasadena Library from Bert Edward Parley?
Yes, I moved through the adopt resolution 2022-001.
Then I seconded.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, Kenny Gross.
Hi.
FJ Pratt.
Hi.
Dean Sirwin.
Hi.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have unanimous, yes, so with that.
We.
That is the only item on.
I need you to act on the second part of the recommendation, which is to request city council to direct staff to create the fund.
Was that not part of the?
No.
No, you. It's not, it's, it's, somebody can just move.
Yeah, so that we, that we act on the second part of the recommendation, which is to request that the city council direct staff to establish a fund, receive the monies from the bequest to ensure the preservation of the funds for the intended purpose of making specified capital improvements to the children's wing.
Can I just, can I make a collective case, I just, I just wanna, so if I understand this though, it's still the purview of the Library Board of Trustees, this isn't then going to the city council for any kind of.
Yeah, the city council will act on it at their next meeting, if you, if you read the analysis, it explains that the because the bequest is made to the library for capital improvements to city property, both bodies must approve the bequest, so basically, the, on the, on the agenda for the September 7th city council meeting will be another staff report and a resolution where they'll, you know, be asked to concur with your acceptance and then to create the fund and.
No, no, that, that, yeah, I understand.
Asking them to create the.
That's all, that's all we're asking them to do.
Again, the, the conditions are very clear, that's, the funds cannot be sheet to the city, so.
It's.
It stays with the Library Board of Trustees.
That's all, I'm just, that's all I wanna make clarified, that it's.
I apologize, I should have asked the city attorney or staff to get us the actual code, the municipal code section, but requests and gifts to the library are the purview, Diana, you don't have that candy, do you, Brian, Joe?
Not immediately, no, I can get it.
I believe I'm correct, and I'll ask staff as well, that gifts and bequests to the library are the purview of the Library Board of Trustees. Obviously, we don't operate in a vacuum, we're part of the city, but those are, we are the body with power over those.
Yeah, education code, section. Yeah, education code, section one, eight, nine, two, zero.
Yep, that, that, thank you, I just wanted, I just needed that clarification.
No, this is, this is a lot of money, there are, there's very stringent conditions on this. So this is something that we should be abundantly clear. Uh and and that's why I I I want to make sure we have all of this in the record that we have given due consideration for this, because this is important, this is.
Well, then, then I, then I second of this, that number two.
Great. We need a roll call vote there, or not, we'll do it.
Yeah, uh uh Kenny Gross.
Hi.
F J Pratt.
Hi.
Dean Sirwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Now with that, I do believe that we will now adjourn. Uh and we'll see everybody here uh next Thursday.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, folks.
It's exciting.
Uh what's the largest gift that we've gotten in the past, does anyone know?
The library?
Yeah.
Um I want to say it was probably around sixty thousand dollars, I'd have to look it up, but.
This is serious, and um I apologize also to you, I do know uh an individual who who knew Bert very well. Uh I've just, he's been in Hawaii, so I haven't had a chance to really talk to him. Uh but I will get us some more information, and if if it's a little light, I'll bring some information up.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, really, I mean. I was floored when I first heard about this. Um and and it's just such a lovely, lovely thing to do. Um and. I know we talked about this and how it would be great that if we can, you know, utilize this, whatever it ends up being. For others, even if we can't. Um we've talked about this a lot, that half of our users are are children.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, half of these, and we have significant users of this library, and half of them are children, so. This is a really good deal to improve that that area.
No, it's.
And I'm, I'm just, I'm stunned, thrilled, and and elated, also it speaks to. Small towns. Yeah.
Well, you know, what, you know, and I agree with you, I think on the press release, it might. Get other people thinking. Wow, maybe all of that here, you know?
I think that's an excellent point, Bianca, hopefully it'll help the Twenty First Century Foundation get off the ground. It certainly will establish a precedent. There's, there's one other wrinkle that I just wanted to prize you of, um so that you're not surprised if it should um manifest. And my understanding is that this has been researched and none has been found, but there was mentioned, we received word from the estate attorney. That that there is a rumored um successor will. Uh that would change the provisions of this will. Um nobody has found it, the estate attorney is doubtful that it can be located, if it even exists, but I just. Wanted to make you aware so that in the unlikely and unfortunate circumstance that it does surface that um you're not surprised.
Is there a timeline on that?
The timeline is the disposition, the wind-up of the estate and my, I believe the. Um initial probate papers were filed, I think, in March, so we're really hoping this gets wrapped up before the end of the calendar year.
I can, uh I can speak to that briefly. I know the uh intended beneficiary, he's the one who told me about this gift. Because after all efforts have been made to locate that uh successor, a signed copy of that successor will. Uh uh so I believe he believes that there unfortunately will not be one found, but it could still happen, but.
Well, but but I mean, could it like, be like, what about like ten years from now, they find something?
I think once probate closes.
Probate should be closed by the end of the year, I don't know, is it? That's another thing we could ask is um, there's a uh the the judge in charge of every probate sets a hearing. Uh for when they want to vote, but obviously all the paperwork has to be done or that hearing will be uh moved back. But uh typically, uh we should be seeing the end of this final November, December.
I would think so, e- except for the tenant, I think that the tenant has rights that.
I think that that just becomes an issue of the the purchaser of that property will acquire it subject to the tenants. People buy properties all the time, yeah. So it's a, it's really a question of that, I I would think, I'm not a real estate attorney. But I would think that if the uh tenant has a uh a right to purchase uh in. Uh their lease, then that would be something that would be being investigated, but unless there's a price set in that lease. I believe it would be a fair market.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that was the issue with him, I think it was just getting announced, so once it loses up.
Uh getting harder.
I I think tenant is on a month-to-month. Lease, the the question is the ability to evict for so long as COVID protections are in place. And the city has adopted um the county's program, so it will depend upon the county's uh rules as to the ability to affect the tenant.
Yeah, the the age of that tenant, um if they're over fifty-five could uh could impact the ability to uh remove them as well.
Yeah.
I think sixty-five. Well done, yes.
Congratulations, you have a lot of important.
During at seven thirty-eight, thank you, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, thank you.